Welcome to the December eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen Board of Commissioners Special Meeting. Please silence your cell phone pages and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located in the back of the chambers. If you'd like to speak on any item today, there is speaker request forms at the back of the, by the bookcases there, and you can give them to Ms. Kara if you'd like to. Thank you. First, we'll have Moment of Silent Refraction and Pledge of Allegiance led by Shannon Rittberger.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shannon, for the pledge. First, we'll have the view and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Drews, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Ms. Brittany, you're up.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor. So, at the prior hearing on the comprehensive plan, you had directed staff to make some changes to some specific sections of the comprehensive plan and provide language. So, we'll start with that first, and then we also did speak with a consultant regarding the PUDs or the Plan Unit Developments. So, our state's attorney, Michelle Hoffman, will be here later. She had some hearings this morning, so if we could hold those discussions till she's available towards the end, so we'll go through some of the other changes. And then our Natural Resource Director, Scott Duffy, had some other proposed changes in Section ten. So, we'll start with, we'll just go section by section. So, if that would be easiest.
Ms. Brittany, you just direct us where you want us to go. You're in charge.
Sure. So, under Section two point two, on page two dash two, under the Black Hills focus area.
Two dash two and Section two.
Staff was directed to include some different opportunities that were available in the hills. So, staff is recommending that we add the language. The uncrowded, natural, and man-made features of the Black Hills are ideal for any outdoor enthusiasts. Hiking, biking, skiing, rock climbing, hunting, fishing, kayaking, and canoeing are just several examples of the many activities the Black Hills has to offer, with several lakes, countless streams, endless miles of hiking and biking trails, and scenic views of Black Hills as a prime destination for tourism.
Nice. Anybody have any questions? Ron, that was kind of your thing. Does that sound appropriate for what you were thinking?
Well, I was thinking about specifically mentioning some of the lakes in the Black Hills, like Paxton, Deerfield.
I think we do have those. Let's see, in a future, trying to remember. Yeah. Well, we do have those in eight dash one, or eight point one.
Do we talk about Norbeck Wilderness Area?
No, that is not discussed in this part of it, but there, the lakes are discussed.
This is supposed to be just general information, so I think that's pretty, pretty much does it.
Okay.
Thank you, Brittany. Do we need to vote on each one of these, Ms. Brittany?
Yeah.
For the change, okay. Move to approve. Moved by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and then under Section four point one, on page four dash three.
Four dash three, just a second, Brittany. Thank you.
Okay, so, under the Economic Development Element Tourism, we changed the paragraph to read, "The tourism economy is prominent in Pennington County. Tourism attracts businesses and employment opportunities which operate primarily from October, or April to October, and seasonally during the winter months to accommodate tourism activities. During this time, there's an influx of jobs and population throughout the county. It will be important for the county to leverage its tourism assets in the coming years to continue to grow the tourism industry in Pennington County." Staff added, "The Black Hills area is a multi-use destination for tourists, offering activities ranging from fishing, hiking, camping, biking, skiing, and horseback riding to rock climbing, kayaking, and wildlife viewing. Tourist draws such as the Mount Rushmore National Memorial, the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally, Mickelson Trail, and the proximity of the Rhapsody Regional Airport are all assets that can be leveraged in the county's advantage."
Any questions?
Did we, at one point in town, or somewhere near, we had talked about golfing, the golf courses?
Yes, yes. That is actually under the recreational open space and tourism element on an eight two.
Okay. I'll wait.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
The only thing that gets a little confusing to me is when we say, April to October, then seasonally through the winter months, maybe what there's better word, seasonally would mean on an annual basis, and during the winter months, we might want to just think of another word that would.
Be appropriate.
Because seasonally, winter, that's, kind of gets a little confusing. Maybe, it's not quite as vibrant during the winter months, or some other wording.
Sure. We just wanted to address, you know, because we do have snowmobiling, snowshoeing, skiing in the hills, you know, instead of always just thinking it's a summer.
Thank you.
Destination.
Well, it was just an idea.
Sure, and I don't know what word, just.
I'm sure somebody can come up with another word.
And, I mean, we could just strike seasonally and just say during the winter months.
Yeah, I think you should strike seasonally, because winter months is seasonal.
Yeah, it's the winter season.
In the winter, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, do we mention, yeah, you mentioned skiing in there, don't you?
Yes.
Are you looking at approving with how it's written, with striking the word seasonally?
Yes.
Is that agreeable?
Was that a motion, LaCroy?
Yes.
Motion by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then it's Section seven point one for Infrastructure Overview. I don't have a page number, but I will find them. It would be on seven dash two.
Mr. DeSanto.
I have a possible amendment that would even make better sense for that particular.
Seven two?
If, if he would rescind his.
On four one?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go back to four dash one.
Because now I get the, the feeling of what they were trying to do, accomplish, but seasonally was just put maybe in the wrong place in the sentence. So, "which operate primarily from April to October, and during the winter months to accommodate seasonal activities."
Correct. Like snowmobiling, ice fishing.
So, we have to re, or reconsider?
Is that a friendly amendment? Well, we already voted on it.
We already voted on it, so it'd have to be rescinded?
Rescinded or reconsidered? Either way, I think we're good. Okay, let's do rescind.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so rescind, let's do a motion to rescind that last motion.
I'll make a motion to rescind.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay.
And I recommend, "and during the winter months to accommodate seasonal tourism activities."
That's motion. Second is by?
I'll second that.
Second by Ross Connect, motion by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Seven one, Infrastructure Overview.
And then, that's on page seven dash two.
Seven dash two, sorry.
It was requested to add the different options that, of onsite wastewater systems that are utilized in the county. So, we just added, "There are several options for onsite wastewater treatment in Pennington County. These include absorbs and trenches and beds, upgrade systems, found systems, oh, I need to add a S there, and evaporate transpiration systems. In addition, incinerator and composting toilets are allowed in remote areas and at small seasonal cabins."
Any questions?
Looks good to me. I make a motion to approve.
Moving by Ross Connect, second by Drews.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the next one is eight dash, on page eight dash two.
Okay.
Yes, so, under the tourism, it would be adding two subsections, lakes, rivers, and streams, and trails and golf courses. So, under lakes, rivers, and streams, we are proposing, "The unique geology of the Black Hills, combined with its striking scenery, tranquil creeks and streams, create the perfect atmosphere for fly fishing. There are several man-made lakes that offer great opportunities, such as fishing, boating, wakeboarding, and water skiing. Several lakes in the Black Hills include Paxton Reserve, Sheridan Lake, Deerfield Lake, and Sylvan Lake, which are fed by creeks and streams, such as Rapid Creek and Spring Creek."
Any additions or discussion or a motion?
A motion to approve.
Motion by Ross Connect, second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then the next subsection under that element would be Trails and Golf Courses. Staff is proposing, "The Black Hills National Forest contains over four hundred and fifty miles of world-class hiking, biking, and running trails, ranging in length and difficulty for all ages and abilities. The Mickelson Trail extends a hundred and eight miles from Edgemont, South Dakota, to Deadwood, South Dakota, and should be, is utilized," instead of it there, I apologize, "is utilized by both tourists and locals. Biking, walking, and running are popular activities along the trail. Golf courses in the hills twist in and out of pine forests across streams and open up to beautiful mountain views. Both tourists and locals play these courses for much of the summer and fall seasons to enjoy the beauty and scenery that the Black Hills have to offer during a round of golf. Some of America's top courses are right here in the heart of the Black Hills."
Perfect.
I think I.
Go ahead, Gretchen.
Brittany, is riding horses not also allowed on the Mickelson Trail?
That is.
It is.
It is. So, we could add biking, walking, running, and horseback riding?
Yeah.
I think maybe we probably want to mention Black Elk Wilderness Area and Black Elk Peak, former, formerly Harney Peak. That's a pretty significant landmark.
Ah, let's see, so do you like another subsection?
That would probably go good with the, somewhere around the Mickelson Trail, because that Harney Peak, that's probably one of the most heavily hiked trails in the Black Hills, or Black Elk.
Okay.
I think that could be added right after that first paragraph.
Exactly.
Such as the Harney Peak Trail.
Such as?
With that, of world-class hiking, such as the Harney, Harney Peak Trail, or Black Elk.
Black Elk.
They call it Black Elk Peak.
Black Elk.
It's Black Elk Peak, yes.
If you wanted to expand on it, you could say it's the tallest point between here and the European coast.
That's right.
Okay.
And then, maybe, under the Mickelson Trail also, we should add snowmobiling, because snowmobiling during the wintertime is allowed on the Mickelson Trail.
Good way for me to see it.
And it's really popular. I mean, there's, oh, yeah, there's tons of snowmobiles on the Mickelson.
I need to try that.
I didn't realize that, Mark. Do they groom that, then?
Oh. Did you get all that, Ms. Brittany?
Yes. Running snowmobiles are popular activities, and then add a sentence in here for the Black Elk Peak as being the highest peak.
Highest peak east of the Rockies, isn't it?
What's that?
It's the highest peak east of the Rockies.
Yeah, to the European coast, towards Switzerland.
The Black Elk Peak is the highest peak east of the Rocky Mountains?
You want that Switzerland thing in there, or do you want just highest mountain east of the Rockies?
I'd say highest peak.
Highest peak, sorry.
Highest point.
What?
Or highest point.
Is point or peak?
I'd say peak.
I'd go peak, just so they.
It's a pencil, pika, peak's a mountain.
Yeah. Okay. Peker point.
There. All right.
Okay, Brittany, read, read what we just put up there.
So, I have, "The Black Hills National Forest contains over four hundred and fifty miles of world-class hiking, biking, and running trails, such as Black Elk Peak, ranging in length and difficulty for all ages and abilities. Black Elk Peak is the highest peak east of the Rocky Mountains. The Mickelson Trail extends a hundred and eight miles from Edgemont, South Dakota, to Deadwood, South Dakota, and utilized by both tourists and locals. Biking, walking, running, horseback riding, and riding snowmobiles are popular activities along the trail."
Do we want to add another segment and just mention the animals, wildlife in the Black Hills, or would that not really pertain to this?
We do have wildlife viewing in, like, the previous, or, I think, under.
Yeah, we did have wildlife viewing in there.
Yeah, we did have it under Section.
We do have it.
I don't think under Trails and Golf Courses it would be appropriate.
We do have it under Economic Development Element Tourism, under four dash three.
Okay. Anybody, anything else on this one? Do we have a motion for the changes?
Move to approve with changes suggested.
Moved by DeSanto.
Okay.
Second by LaCroy on the changes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, so now, we're going to go into some of the recommended changes from our Natural Resource Director, Scott Duffy. He had some suggested changes in Chapter ten. I'll get to that. Ten dash one. I believe that he has an, I, there's an email in your packet with all of his suggested changes.
Back page, guys, of your packet is Duffy's changes.
On ten dash one, it starts on ten dash one.
Two pages, sorry.
Yeah, he had recommended adding this language. There's quite a paragraph here regarding the state noxious weed laws and aquatic invasive species under the Natural and Cultural Resources Overviews.
And where do you believe that should be, Ms. Brittany?
Following.
Both paragraphs.
Yeah, that's.
On page ten one.
Mm-hmm. Let's see.
Maybe it should go between those two paragraphs. What do you guys think of that? Because it has to do with our preservation of the natural resources.
Scenic, high quality.
Conserving these vital and natural resources, you know, the last sentence of the first paragraph is conserving these vital natural and cultural resources is critical to support a scenic, high-quality and environment, high-quality environment for residents and visitors.
That's why it should go there, because of the last, what you just read, an environment for residents and visitors. That's why it should be after that. I agree.
Between the two paragraphs.
Yes, sir. Anybody have a problem with that? Or discussion? Brittany, what do you think, putting it between the two?
Yes, I think it makes sense, because I think that last sentence kind of leads into some of the rules and rings.
Okay. Do you have a motion to that effect?
Move to approve.
Moved by DeSanto, second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then, on page ten dash three, he also had some recommended changes in Chapter ten, under ten point two, in goal, NCR dash two. He recommends to change, to read, "The counties shall ensure the protection of environmentally sensitive wildlife and plant life, including those species designated as rare, threatened, and/or endangered by the federal and/or South Dakota State Government through compatible land use development and enforcement of state and local invasive species laws."
So, he's just adding of state and local species.
That'd be a substitute for what's there.
Yes, for what's there in two dash, two point one.
So, it reads the whole thing, Gary, except for those last. Yes, sir. Okay.
I'd move the, the substitute language for NCR dash two point one.
Okay, moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then, on that same page, ten dash three, under ten point two, the goal, NCR two point six, he is recommending that it read, "The counties shall encourage the planting of diversity of native trees, shrubs, and grasslands in order to preserve the visual integrity of the landscape, provide habitat conditions suitable for native vegetation and wildlife, and ensure that a maximum number and variety of well-adapted plants are maintained."
So, diversity's added. Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion, that we substitute that language for NCR dash two point six.
Motion by Drews.
Yes, sir.
Second by LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next page.
And then, he has under ten point two, goal, NCR dash seven. I don't see that one.
Maybe he's adding it.
Maybe he's adding.
Adding, yep, under, well, we have five, so what if it's six?
And it's, NCR.
Two dash seven, maybe?
It'd be two dash seven.
It'd be two dash seven, okay, under the NCR dash two, okay. He's requesting to add, "Pennington County's natural and agricultural resources are protected from invasive species. NCR seven point one, any gravel, timber, hay, and/or other earth and material removed from the property should be free of noxious weed, plant material, and/or seeds. Seven point two would read, "Any equipment used in disturbing the ground on the property should be cleaned of any soil or earth and material before leaving the property. Seven point three would read, "Any disturbed ground should be reseeded with a native agricultural, producing, or ornamental lawn, grass, mixed seed. Seven point four would read, "All landowners should use an integrated noxious weed plan for controlling existing noxious weeds on the property to prevent the spread onto neighboring properties." And seven point five, "Any water craft leaving water, the water should be drained and free of any vegetation."
So, Brittany, in, in ours, or, isn't it supposed to NCR? Or NRC, or NCR?
Yeah, NCR, it's, it seems like.
NCR, and then it would be two dash seven, two dash seven.
Yeah, well, I think he's actually adding a separate goal, and I think it should be six instead of seven.
That's what it looks like.
Yes, that's what it looks like to me. So, it's a completely separate goal, so a goal would read, NCR dash six, which would, the goal would be, "Pennington County's natural and agricultural resources are protected from invasive species." And then, under that goal, these would be the objectives, and it's six point one, six point two, six point three, six point four, six point five.
So, NCR dash six.
I'd make a motion that we accept the language for.
NCR.
NCR dash six.
And then, call it NCR dash six one, six two, six three, six four, and six five.
Second.
It's been a motion by Drews, second by DeSanto, on changing it to NCR dash six, six one, six two, six three, six four, and six five. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then, the last one was under ten point two, again, on page ten dash five, dealing with mining operations, changing that language to read in the goal section, "Mining operations in Pennington County will be reclaimed in a legally and financially feasible, productive manner according to best management practices designed to restore the site to an appropriate land use."
When I mention that, I, you want to go legally permissible.
Legally permissible.
Comma. Fiscally possible.
Yeah, where do we go to?
Fiscally possible?
Fiscally possible, comma. Financially feasible.
Oops. There it is. Sorry, missed that one. Say that again, Ron.
Legally permissible, comma, fiscally possible, comma, financially feasible, comma, and max, maximally productive manner.
And a max.
Ron, explain the difference between fiscally possible and financially feasible.
It might be fiscally possible, but economics wouldn't make it financially feasible. It's just the four tests when you do a highest and best use analysis and an appraisal.
Okay.
So, because, consistent with the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice.
So, in front of productive, you had, I just missed that word, I apologize. So, it'd be financially feasible and?
Max, maximally productive manner.
Your word, maximally?
Don't ask me how to spell it.
A L L Y, maybe?
Google it.
Yeah, I did, it's A L L Y.
A L L Y.
No, maximally.
Oh.
A L L Y, there you go.
I'll just do that.
Maximumly, or maximally?
Maximum.
Max.
Productive manner according to best management practices designed to restore the site to an appropriate land use.
You okay with that?
Does that read right?
Ms. Daniela.
Brittany will spell check it.
Going to make their motion to that.
Okay, that was Ron's motion. Do we have a second?
Okay, yep.
Second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, so, the last section was regarding PUDs. We did, on the state's attorney's office, and I did have a conference call with consultants regarding Plan Unit Developments. I know that Commissioner LaCroy heard some of the, the discussion that we had at the previous Planning Commission meeting regarding Plan Unit Developments, because we had one that we actually had some issues with. In discussions with him, his experience across the nation is that they're somewhat costly to implement. They may create public perception of favoritism, you know, where we're granting a use that probably wouldn't ordinarily be allowed in that area. They're difficult to enforce, because basically, every single Plan Unit Development is its own zoning district, with very different conditions versus, you know, just a standard zoning district that has, you know, the standard conditions. And it may result in nonconformity with surrounding land uses inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. So, what we discussed with Mr. Rust was that the existing zoning designation, because that's what the Plan Unit Developments right now, is a zoning designation, so they're actually getting rezoned to that designation. The problem that lies with that, and Commissioner LaCroy knows that, is if they have conditions under that zoning designation and they don't meet those conditions, what does that mean? Because you can't necessarily revoke that zoning district, because that's what it's zoned. So, moving forward, the existing Plan Unit Development zoning designation would remain. So, all the existing zoning districts that are Plan Unit Development would remain, and those conditions would, you know, be legal nonconforming, and they would continue to be legal nonconforming. The only time they wouldn't be legal nonconforming is if they expanded more, if they wanted to have more land, then they would have to be rezoned to a more appropriate land use. But if they stay within the legal description, the parcel that the existing zoning is in, then those would be the legal nonconforming, and they would stay that way. Moving forward, that zoning designation would no longer exist. Instead, it would actually be, we, we are recommending that it would be a overlay under certain zoning districts. So, in an instance where somebody would need multiple conditional use permits, say, for instance, we have. um, say for instance, we have a, um, planned unit development out in Rapid Valley Trailwood Village. Um, it's a multi-unit type, they have single-family residences, they have townhomes, they have paired homes. So instead of requiring a, a CUP for every single lot in that subdivision to have a conditional use permit for a paired home or a townhome, it would be a PUD overlay that would allow those types of designations on certain lots in that overlay district. But the underlying zoning district would still stand, so if those conditions were never met, it would go back to whatever the underlying zoning district would be, hence suburban residential or low-density residential. In the case of like a recreational resort, you know, the underlying zoning district typically is either highway service or general agriculture. Um, so that would be an allowed use, but instead of having multiple CUPs for one piece of property, you could do an overlay that would. So your underlying zoning district would still stand, so you're not actually rezoning it, you're actually getting essentially a permit. Does that make sense?
Uh, Brittany, what does, what's Rapid City's policy? Cause I'm appraising real estate right now, and it's PUD. So why isn't the city moving in that direction?
I, I don't, I don't know, and I don't know their process. Uh, my understanding is they do like a planned development, and that planned development is over the, an existing zoning district. So if it's like, uh, I think they have like urban residential and things like that, so that allows, you know, townhomes and paired homes and regular homes. I do know from experience, they've had, um, they've had to get conditional uses for paired homes in certain districts.
And, and she's right, because we have, like on the corner there, we have its own commercial, or no, it's, it's um, medium density, and then over that, I got a planned development that I have to follow. So she's right, it, it gets a zoning, and then it gets a PUD. But they used to use on conditional use permits, if you remember Lloyd, was eleven six nineteen's, where you take a conditional use permit and basically do a, almost like a PUD on it. Which was, give you, um, basically saying on that conditional use permit, or that permit was the conditional, the eleven six nineteen. You did basically what a PUD was doing anyway. So you could do it either way, if I'm correct, Brittany, with a CUP, but like you said, if you want to do it like the city, you do a zone. And then through that zone, if it was commercial, you'd do a, a plant, a CUP, which is commercial CUP, basically, commercial plan or C, whatever. Anyway, it'd be a commercial.
So the conditional use permit would apply to properties that wouldn't fit into a specific zoning category.
Well, they, the conditional use permits would still be, so they're kind of an exception to a regular zoning district. So every zoning district has permitted uses that don't require anything but building permits. They have conditional uses that are, you know, they're typical in a district, but they're basically like an exception. Uh, but they still fit the general land uses in those areas. And so instead of having multiple CUPs under those districts, you could do a planned development. Um, like, so sa- say for instance, I just gave, um, Trailwood Village, uh, because that, that is a planned unit development that, that was appropriate, and it was designed that way because there was, there's mixed uses and there's different things in there, otherwise they would have had to have all different zoning districts, they would have had multiple CUPs. So every lot that had a paired home or a townhome would have had to have a CUP. Versus just being a planned development, and those lots were designated for those types of uses. So, but the underlying district there would be, would be suburban residential, they would, they're still residential in nature, that's the way that they're being used. But the way that ordinance requires a CUP for townhomes or paired homes, they would have been required multiple ones just for that, and that's a very large subdivision, so there would have been. So each individual lot would have had to have its own CUP, which really doesn't make.
So, all of your one through four could go into your conditional use permits being the same thing. You know that, right?
Right, correct.
With the same argument.
Right, and, and it could. And what happens with CUPs right now and what isn't with planned unit developments, under CUPs, we have those five criteria for review. So you have a standard of review for a conditional use permit. Or, um, when you look at vacation home rentals, there's a very strict standard of review that we look at. For guesthouses, there's a strict standard of review. For three twenty undermining, there's a strict, they're conditional uses, but there's a standard of review. And even with a planned unit development, we could amend that section two thirteen where there's a strict standard of review for a planned unit development.
I'm gonna stop for you just for a sec. I think we need examples, like, I, I don't know if you guys need it, I need to see what you're saying. Meaning, okay, this is a zoning, this is what we do with the PUD, this is what we do with the CUP, and why that's, that's different. And then why you wanna change it as a zoning district? I mean, can we see that on paper somehow, or see how that's gonna work? Like, show example, Mark's land is, um, highway service. Then you put highway service on Mark's land, and then you do a CUP, or do you do a, a PUD?
It would depend on what you, if you wanted to do a recreational resort with multiple uses, it would require a CUP. Instead of having a, well, and that's what, that's what it is, you could still do, a PUD would still essentially be a CUP, cause you'd still have a standard of review. It would be, uh, under the conditional use. Under that zoning district, it would be a planned development. And then when you go, like when we do recreational vehicle parks, you have to go to section three oh six, and there's very specific standards of review, it would be the same. Um, that, under the CUPs, it would say planned development, and then you'd go to that section two thirteen, and those would be your standards of review for that.
For me, I, I think I, I need it lined out on a piece of paper to actually see that.
Yeah, a conditional use permit is a permit to do something that wouldn't normally be permissible. That's what it is. And so, my question is, in twenty years from now, when we got a whole new department staff, how enforceable? I mean, they can go in there and, well, that's not the way we read it, because they're not the ones that did it twenty years before then. My con- my concern is what's gonna happen to the general public in twenty years from now? Who's gonna read that and interpret it different than maybe the folks that did it in the first place? That's, uh, planned unit development, to me, has got a little more teeth and legal legality.
Well, and that's, I wish Michelle was here, because Michelle could explain it from the legal perspective. Um, because there have been some cases on planned unit developments where they failed to have like those standards of review on them, and they have been considered spot zoning. So that, that's, and I wish she was here, I know that she had other hearings this morning, so she could explain kinda what you're asking, that legal side of it, from that legal perspective, and having those standards of review. Um, because that, that protects the public and the commission when they approve those things, when they like have those standards of review.
The bottom, hold on just a sec, Lloyd, you're next, sorry.
From the planning commission meeting, it seems like with this PUD, we, we've got two examples that are kinda out there right now. One with Mobile Home Court, and ones that brought it to, to my memory again Monday, was, was that PUD that was established during two thousand two. Had all these plans, and they got sold off the land, and now we've, we've got problems with what's going on out there with the communications and what the actual, what it was. And there's really, we're, we're making, the planning commission recommended to, to go back to rezoning, correct? And part of those PUDs, we, we can't really enforce them. Right? I mean, I, bottom line, we make, we create them and have them, but if they don't follow through with them, we, we really got, I, I, I think that's the bottom line of what I'm thinking about with the PUDs is doesn't need to be no, as you guys talked about, like an overlay, another way to review, I mean, we're not eliminating to be able to do some of the variants that we wanna do, we just, we got to be able to, to have some say. And if things ain't happening, you know, as Ron said, things change in twenty years. You know, or things don't go the way they, you planned them out, then you wanna be able to change back, makes it easier.
Gary?
Well, I, I'm not understanding it either, but as I initially read this, I thought a PUD could only exist under a conditional use permit, but as I'm hearing you explain that, that's not the case.
It is an actual zoning district.
Which might be the easiest thing to do is just take a property that currently is a planned unit development, pull that file out, let Deb look at it, and say, no, if we were gonna do it the way that you're suggesting with the conditional use permit, say this is the way we do it.
I'd like to see the options and if there's any.
There's a lot of files up there with PUDs.
Hold on, Ron. So I would like to see the options that we have and, and in samples, and then, then you guys say, okay, this is the problem with this, this is the problem with this. Cause I'm seeing both of those have the same issues. So I don't know if there's a better solution. Mark?
I think a good example would be, um, where Arrowhead Country Club is, for, for example. Where you have, where it's suburban residential, and then, I mean, I don't know exactly how the steps went in planning that area. But then, later on, as Brittany was saying, you have an overlay that allows for the building of a golf course within that neighborhood. But then they figure out that it's not financially feasible anymore. And decide not to do it, you can remove that overlay, and the suburban residential zoning still remains. And that, am I, is that a good example?
Yes, and, and in the case, um, you guys will see that planned unit development review, the same one that Commissioner LaCroy saw at the plan, at the planning commission. The other issue with planned unit development, um, like with this one in particular, it was developed by one individual, it was for fifty-one lots, or fifty-one dwelling units. So that could mean apartments, that could mean townhomes. Um, but instead, that lot was plotted, part of it was plotted through the city of Bucksel, or part of it was plotted through the city of Rapid City. Now you have three different owners in a planned unit development. And the way that our major amendment works for a rezon, all the property owners under that zoning district have to agree to rezon. Well, those three property owners are not in agreement to rezon. So now those two of the property owners can't do what they want to do with their property, because one doesn't because of that rezon. So, uh, uh, that's kind of one of the, the issues. If you have a planned unit development or a piece of property that's owned under one entity, um, it's, it's prob- it works, there's ones out there that work and they work great. Um, but there's ones that do not, and we're trying to find some median in the middle to try to figure out how, how the community, and they can still be innovative, they can still be creative. And it's not onerous on a property owner to get five CUPs for one essential, like a recreation resort. Or a multi, um, use, um, district like Trailwood Village, where you have some commercial, you have some mobile homes you have. So it's not an onerous process, but you're not taking away the ability for them to be innovative and creative and but it's still in harmony with their surrounding zoning district, is that?
Basically, you'd zone something, so it'd be all the same, and then you'd put a PUD overlay on it?
Correct, that would essentially be what it would be.
So she's saying it'd be the PUD, the overlay would be still there, the PUD would still be there, Ron. But first of all, you'd want to zone it like highway service in Mark's case. And then he'd wanna do some special things in that zoning, then he'd do an overlay of a PUD. And then if Mark decided, just like Mark was saying, then you'd take that off if you wanted, one day you like, okay, I just want highway service, I don't need the overlay, or on the overlay, change it to something else.
So what's the difference between that and doing a major and minor amendment to the PDs as they exist today?
So a minor amendment is what we look at as essentially like a CUP type process, a major amendment is a re- like essentially a rezon. That's where you run into the problem if you have multiple owners, like in Trailwood Village, if they wanted to amend that PUD, every single person in that PUD would have to agree. And there's two hundred homes in that, PUD, unless staff or the, or the commission directed staff to make that major amendment in that PUD, if we were seeing. So, so those are, and, and that's why we came to the planning commission, and we will be in front of the board also with that one, um, that we were speaking of with that three lots, because it doesn't meet, um, the PUD, not any, in any way. They can't agree to make that, the major amendments that are needed to make it compliant. But it fits zoning districts that are comparable to the area, so it's more appropriate to rezon it to how it's being used in the area.
So then, it also, like I was just telling Gary, it keeps it, like if I do highway service, and then I do a PUD li- overlay, it has to stay, the zoning is, is, is highway service. So you can't go and put three different, uh, like, uh, you can't put housing and all that stuff in highway service PUD overlay, right? Because it's still zoned highway service.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. Actually, the idea of the PUD overlay, um, which would be authorized through our ordinance, would allow us to make exceptions. So even though it would be highway service, um, through the ordinance, we can create exceptions in terms of how that property is used, used through the PUD. And then, what I took away from the last meeting on the planned unit, on, on the comp plan was that this board wanted flexibility, and I believe that we can incorporate, we can build in that flexibility through the revision of our ordinance without being, um, dealing with the difficulties that dis- rezoning creates.
So Michelle, why would you, I guess, then I don't get it. So why would you wanna have a rezon of highway service on it? Do an overlay of a PUD and not keep it in that zoning of highway service with the PUD, cause they'll have exceptions, basically, to highway service that we use, don't have in one sense. But you're gonna let people build or do whatever they want with that land with the PUD, or you're gonna keep it in highway service regulations?
It would remain highway service, and it might be subject to some highway service, uh, regulations. But through the ordinance, we can create some exceptions. For instance, I recently read a case where the overlay allowed certain uses. Um, but it, it kept the, um, PUD to the density requirements of that particular zoning district. So I'm saying is you might still be subject to some of the regulations, say for highway service. But we can create exceptions where individuals may, you know, uh, make creative use of their property. But again, it's just about doing this through the ordinance, so we're, um, we have so we're, we have a greater opportunity to enforce those conditions.
But why wouldn't you do a conditional use permit on a highway service to do the same thing?
Well, first of all, you might have, in a PUD, there's often multiple uses. So the PUD avoids having to have five, six, seven CUPs, all subject to review. You're able to do, um, a PUD, PUD for multiple uses.
Problem I have, when you say highway service, it's been my experience over the last thirty years, highway service is something that butts a highway. So when you get three miles off the highway and you have a commercial property, we can't call it highway service, because that'd be spot zoning. So then what do we call it?
I'm sorry, when you've got commercial, what, three miles in from the highway service? Well, often what PUDs will do, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not a planner, but let's say you have a PUD overlay. It might allow those uses that are appropriate only for highway service along the highway, but allow those commercial uses um, further in, um, into the interior of the PUD.
But what would the prop- what would the zoning be when we looked at a zoning map? What would that property be zoned?
It would maintain its existing zoning, um, designation. Although PUD ordinance would allow, just like with a CUP, is to allow certain exceptions. For instance, you might decide that you only wanna allow PUD developments in suburban residential, limited egg, and general egg, just like a VHR. You're gonna designate, or would designate through our, you know, when we approach and revise our, um, our PUD ordinance. You would decide where you think PUD developments are appropriate, and you would also decide under what conditions they're appropriate. And would, again, also be able to try and build in some of these what-ifs to allow people a little bit more flexibility in their development.
Well, see, in two thousand, Marsha Alkins come to me, and she said, you gotta rezon your property because it's zoned egg. And I had to go through a year and a half working through that process. And she said, the way we're gonna do this is a planned unit development, which is what I put together. And now you're saying, if that wasn't in place today, I would call it a conditional use permit.
It, it would just be a PUD permit, it'd be, it'd be a permit, um, you can it'd say it's akin to conditional use, but you're basically, it'd be a permit for a planned unit development. And I'm not clear, Brittany may have more information, I'm not even sure if you, I know you're rezon, rezoned to a PUD district. But I think it may have been, I think a lot of the uses that you're currently using your property for were allowed under conditional uses. So really probably would have been, you would have needed to have multiple cond- conditional use permits. I'm not sure, I don't have all the information, I'm not sure that you really needed to rezon.
Well, you, you gotta be zoned something, it's gotta be commercial, light industrial, uh, highway service, general egg, limited egg, it's gotta, you gotta have one of those. It's gotta, you gotta have one of those as a basis. And then on top of that, then you do your plan unit development because it's gonna be an atypical property or conditional use.
Ron, what did you, I mean, what is your property now? Is it limited egg? Is it?
It's PUD.
It's, it's.
It's actually a color that says P U D.
So it's a zoning.
Yes, and his is zoned and um, Ron's is unique and it fits what we're talking about. You have multiple parcels and multiple tax parcels. So instead of having a, a, the same conditional use permit on every single one of those tax parcels, that's probably why they had you zoned to a PUD. So it was all inclusive, you are one owner, all of those tax parcels, you're using all of them in the same manner. Your resort areas in the same manner, so instead of having a separate CUP on every single tax parcel, they had you that. Uh, and I don't know for sure, I'm just in my mind, like if I was sitting there talking to you today, that's probably what I would have proposed and why is because you had multiple tax parcels that were, that were all being used in the exact same manner. So you would have had to have.
So your rezoning would have remained general egg, but you would have received a PUD overlay? So you didn't have to seek CUPs on each individual parcel?
Well, my problem is, is over the years, I'm praising all kinds of real estate. I run in the, and you know, I have to identify the zoning, that's probably the first thing I do. Cause if it isn't legally permissible, you just will not even go any further. And so it, it, that's the problem is trying to figure out what a property is owned and what it can legally be used for. And so the conditional use permit, it's, it's just gonna be a lot of terminology that says, we'll allow this, we'll permit this, we'll permit this.
No, in this instance, you wouldn't because you would have a planned unit development permit. It would be just like be a VH, the VHR ordinance, it would identify. So as a realtor, let's say you have an individual who is purchasing property that's currently zoned general egg. Uh, under the ordinance, you would be able to say planned unit developments may be uh, permitted in these following areas. So you're very, you would be able to tell your client, you're in general egg, you may seek a, a planned unit development permit for the, your intended uses. Similar to such the VHR ordinance. So you would be able to know whether that was something you could or could not do.
It's my understanding that you guys wanted to get rid of the PUD category or category and replace it with a conditional use permit.
Correct, and that they wanted to get rid of the zoning. But um, when Michelle and I discussed it, because we have some areas instead of when we, when we meet with people as staff, we look at a property, we have one, a plan year development that will be in front of you shortly. They have a single family residence, they wanna have a bed and breakfast, and they wanna have vacation cabins. So instead of having a CUP for every single one of those uses, let's say they decide the vacation cabins aren't, are you know, possible, it, it isn't something that's financially feasible or economically feasible. They, they would have to get rid of that CUP instead of amending a, a planning development or whatever, they wanna convert it to a guest house or you know, things like that, it allows them to give them that flexibility because they have a large piece of property and they wanna do some multiple uses and they don't really know what the market's going to be. But they, but they're in an area that's conducive of them because there's other things like that in the area. So they wanna have that flexibility with them having to go through, in, in all honesty, a three hundred and seventy dollar permit process, three separate hearings, three separate requirements and criteria.
Are you still saying, Brittany, that so we don't want it as a zoning district, but we want it as an overlay?
Yes, we're not eliminating.
Getting rid of the PUD. Uh, Ron, what we're gonna do is you're gonna be like, basically, well, it's what you have on your property. You have um, egg, general egg, and then you have an overlay is what it would be called uh, of a PUD. Conditional use permits would be used especially like I have low density residential and I need a conditional use permit to allow a business, a hair business on it, that's a conditional use. When you have multiple uses on a property that has been zoned a certain category, that's when we do an overlay, instead of calling it a PUD uh, zone, it would be a PUD overlay over general egg.
And that was my, that was ba- basic question, what would the zoning be? So would it be general egg then? With a PUD overlay with conditional uses? I just wanna do what's easiest for the county and is right for the general public.
I think this would be easier for the general public too, because then you're not going through the rezoning process.
I think it's just a matter of learning curve for everybody.
It'd save them time, you guys, and uh, flexibility. That's, that's a good way to put it.
And we would be looking, our, our ordinance, like many of our ordinances, really need revision. I don't even think we're uh, when we look at the current PUD ordinance, I'm not sure that we've been uh, fulfilling the intent of that ordinance um, as we should. But as we redo our ordinances, we're gonna be, you know, looking for your guidance. We wanna build in as much flexibility for the property owner and, and address all of your concerns.
So one of Ron's concerns, that's a concern of mine now that he brought it up, is um, with doing it this way with the overlay, pardon me, leave us sus- susceptible in the future when all of us are gone, they got a whole new group of people running things, to misinterpretation of what we, what the intent was?
No, because the reality is, is we're not eliminating planned unit developments, they will remain. We're just not gonna have a zoning district, that's PUD.
So one more question, then the ones that have that uh, zoning district, a PUD, are we gonna have them rezone if they change anything?
They're grandfathered.
Okay, unless they change something, then they're gonna have to rezone?
Well, they can change within the interior, it's only if they want more property to be included in the planned unit development. If they do that, then they would have to rezone appropriately and then do the overlay. But if they're within their parcel boundary, um, and they, and they change and it's within, you know, what they're doing, then I would say that it would.
So you're gonna change a rezone and then you're gonna have to have them pay for a, a overlay when they already have a PUD?
Well, no, I think, uh, what Brittany's trying to say is, I think, did you mention the current issue we're dealing with? So we have a current issue where the conditions of the PUD granted in two thousand two were never fulfilled. Uh, and now we're, uh, given the circumstances with water resources can never be fulfilled at this time. That's a little different situation, so what do you do with that? Well, that makes sense to look at rezoning. I think as we redo our ordinance, we can look at, just like we recently did with aggregate mining, we can look at what does it, what do we envision the existing PUD districts in terms of grandfathering? What does that mean? And you know, if they're minor tweaks, maybe minor amendments to the PUD, maybe we build that into the ordinance where they don't have to rezone. Again, we wanna be user friendly and we wanna accommodate the property user. So again, I think those, it's an excellent question and I think we can address that, you know, the revision of our ordinance.
Brittany, have you ever looked at other counties and other states that are going, you know, similar to the Black Hills and the mix with the Forest Service and the, all the, all the different types of uses? Have we compared what we're gonna do here to other counties?
I do know the case I recently read, Lawrence County does an overlay, is not a district, it's an overlay. In fact, it was the Froley Ranch litigation, there was litigation surrounding that particular PUD. And in those instances, uh, it was not a district, it was an overlay.
My, my bottom line is, is as you guys said, customer service. I mean, and cost savings for, for, for our residents. I mean, if they wanna do something, why would we want to, uh, Brittany said exactly, three sixty-three, you know, three hundred and sixty dollars for four different adds up, and then you got mailings and you got all that, you know, it's.
That's, that's the bottom line, uh, Commissioner LaCroy, is the changes and what we're gonna do to people if they have to come back and do fo- four different permits after they already permitted because they do a minor amendment. If you do a major, you have to change some of that stuff and pay more permitting anyway. But uh, bottom line is that we, we look at those changes and then see what we got out there. I guess I'd like to know when we make those changes, how many PUDs we have and how many, you know, and how many people this is gonna affect and how much that costs. And you're right, Commissioner LaCroy, those costs of what that's gonna be.
I guess one of the questions I had last time, uh, they say you're grandfathered in, and I just wondered how long grandfathered means.
To, well, it means forever as long as the use remains the same and the scope of that use remains the same. Now, I think one of the concerns Commissioner Hancock just mentioned, what if it's a, a minor change in that PUD? Again, I think we can build into ordinance where they're still grandfathered in. Now, but if they're gonna go from, let's say, twenty mobile homes and an RV park to apartment complexes and a hotel or that type, a huge resort, well, that's a major change and they would probably need to come back and, and address that with, with the commission in terms of their land use. So I think we can adjust.
Just seems that when time goes on, things get diluted and grandfather, yeah, it really, yeah. You made it twenty years and we're, we're making changes. And uh, I just wanna make sure that the general public's protected, uh, at twenty years, thirty years, if it says grandfather, hopefully it means grandfather if you don't make any changes.
And that, Ron, that goes both ways because then people are building around you and things are happening. So they need to be protected that you're, you know, you have a minor am- amendment and not a major amendment affecting their water and their sewer and their um, general.
It's all about property rights.
Yes, sir. So it works kind of both ways, Commissioner LaCroy.
So Michelle and, and Brittany, what your recommendation is to do the, wha- what, what is your recommendation on this?
To accept the uh, comp plan uh, as written with regard to PUD. All the, all this plan, it's just an overarching plan and it's just indicating that we're not going to exercise PUDs as a zoning district in the future. That's, that's all it's saying, it's not, it's not saying we're getting rid of PUDs.
So how do we write it? So it says that we don't want it as a zoning district, but we want it as an overlay district. Do we just write it in our ordinance or do we say it?
We write it in our ordinance that way.
Question on grandfathering, does the grandfathering clause continue on from transfer of property?
With the, Madam Chair, with all the discussion and, and the last two, I'll make a motion to, we keep the PUD ordinance as written with the understanding that we're gonna have an overlay, PUD overlays. Ordinances are gonna be re.
I'll second that.
Is that?
So basically.
Could you word that better for me?
Uh, well, actually, what I was gonna suggest, I would, I'm fine with that motion. But I, I know one of our recommendations is for um, the comp plan to go back to the planning commissioner one final review before your final approval. Uh, as you know, Brittany and I are um, a little bit new to the comp plan. So I think in between then and now too, we can make sure the language within the comp plan does not prohibit PUDs as developments under ordinance.
That would be great.
Okay, any other questions? So um, what was that language?
I would just approve the comp plan, this particular uh, provision of the comp plan as written.
Okay, is that what you said, Commissioner LaCroy? Okay, and that's what I second. Ms. Karen, did you get that?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Michelle.
And that's all I have, um, if there's any public here that wants to comment on anything, but that's all I have.
You have anybody in the public who would like to comment in any of our changes or the comp plan? You can, come, come on, come up here, sir. Thank you, sir. How are you this morning? Your name, sir?
I'm Rick Bell, uh, resident here in Rapid City, professional engineer and chair of the Dakota Rural Action. Um, I just found out about this uh, twenty forty comp plan, so I was gonna comment on that, is that appropriate time to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, Commissioner Hancock and commissioners, again, uh, welcome. Uh, I thank you for this opportunity to, to discuss. Um, I've followed the revisions to the comp plan over past number of months and I'm a little bit upset with some of the things that have been suggested and then subsequently stricken. I mean, one of them, for instance, we were very much in favor of was doing the hazardous waste collection at least once a year and now it's watered down and said, as needed, um, so that got stricken. Uh, and I guess just in general, I would say um, that a, a plan like this uh, should be uh, setting high standards. Um, you know, the definition of goal is a, a result or achievement towards which effort is directed. It's an aim or an end that we want to get to. And so there are a number of uh, probably hundreds of situations in which semantics is really important in this, in this plan. And we have a lot of shoulds, which I think should be shalls, and I think there's a lot of, you know, uh, wording in here that could be strengthened that shows the county commission is really aiming towards a higher standard in the future. We, we want this goal, this plan to be uh, something that we strive for for the next twenty years. Um, just in general, um, you know, we, we have some issues with regard to the mining here in the Black Hills. And just so, I don't wanna take up too much time, but just as an example, I'm on page a hundred and one and I don't know, it's NCR, it used to be six, now it's five point one through five point something or other, maybe we could get to that.
NCR six, we have it in here. We changed it. Ours is, are we on the, you know what page that is, Brittany?
Yeah, I think it's in section ten.
It's a natural uh, and cultural resources elements.
Section ten, Brittany?
We're looking at.
It's on ten one.
Which one, ten?
Dash five.
Ten dash five.
One, one of the questions I have is the goal says mining operations in Pennington County will be reclaimed following excavation according to best practices and restore the site to pre-mining land use. It doesn't say whether this is just new or existing. And I think, you know, if the goal here is to reclaim even uh, existing mining operations that have been left in a state of disrepair, I think it should be clarified to say um, that and.
Wanna, do you wanna read the new version of this? Cause it says a lot of shalls in here. Did you wanna read that, Mr. Bell? Did you want?
Is this what we're at here on the, the revision?
Yeah, five, five dash one, two, three, four, five, am I correct?
Yeah, and, and I'm reading goal, NCR five.
Five mining operations will be reclaimed.
Mining operations will be reclaimed. Is that refer to uh, all just new mining operations or existing mining operations?
I think there's five things below it that say shall and how those shall be done.
Right.
Shall work with appen- applicants to minimize the adverse effects of environmental features. Shall work with applicants to minimize, minimize potential hazards. Shall encourage development mineral deposit compatible surrounding uses. I think it kinda defines what you're saying for shall.
I agree with you on this particular instance, yes.
Or older, yep.
So, but my question is if there's an existing mining operation that's been left in the state of disrepair, uh, is it going to be the county's position that that should be reclaimed? Someone should go back and um, do what's in this goal here, which is to reclaim it according to best practices, restore the site to pre-mining land use. And uh, so you guys can discuss it, but you know, the question would be to clarify that with regard to whether that applies to just new mining operations or even those that uh, are twenty years old and sitting there with a hole in the ground, so.
But if we use the word proposed, proposed mining, I don't think it'd be fair to go back to ones that've been out there for thirty years and make them.
Okay, well, again, uh, if this is a goal which is uh, something we want to achieve towards which effort is direct in an aim or an end, which is what I think it should be, uh, then that's, that's your, your prerogative. But uh, I, I think there's a lot of old mining operations that should be attended to and it's not the intent. What I'm hearing you, the county commission, on this particular item, it's not your intent to, to address any of those old.
Either county or the Department of uh, Energy and Natural Resources, if it, if it's a.
Danielle, do you know by chance, um, what they do with old mines? Can you come up for just a sec, Danielle? Danielle might know more since, um, she kinda reads all this stuff every day.
Danielle Weaver's, um, manager of environmental and safety affairs at Peat Lean and Sons. On, on the older mines that have not been reclaimed that. On, on the older mines that have not been reclaimed, that, um, I don't, I guess I'm not sure if you're talking about older abandoned mines maybe up in the hills. I, I, I'm not sure where the focus is. It depends on the year that it was actually mined as to whether the, the federal mining laws applied to the reclamation enforced, the reclamation on that piece or not. So there might be some actual properties and there likely are hundreds out in the hills that were mines at one time and it was prior to any mining laws that if you, if you would put something in there to force it, it would actually, I think it would go back to the landowner value on that side of it. You, you wouldn't, you would require anyone that sold that land on a new deal to basically go on and reclaim it. And I think you're going to have some valuation issues, um, for people that have existing properties. And I'd be really concerned about what you're doing with that piece of it. Um, as the goal states now, any new mining that you're taking on or anything that's being proposed, and even according to the ordinance that is going through at this point for the aggregate side of it, it requires them to follow under the reclamation rules that are in the ordinance right now. So I think you're covered on that piece of it on current mining.
So this, just, Mr. Bell, this is a guide for us. It's not, it's not the detail of it. The detail comes with, this is a guide and it goes to an ordinance. So we are changing ordinance to make stricter. So, so this is a guide for us to follow into the ordinance, which we made three twenty and made that a lot stricter on mining and, and setbacks and everything to do with that. So again, um, when I was in the city, the comprehensive plan is a guide for us to follow, not a shall have to do, but something that if we shall do it, we will turn it into an ordinance or something to do with our zoning laws and change it into a shall. Does that make sense?
It does. And, uh, my only comment is, again, uh, if it's a goal, we should set the bar rather high. And then if through an ordinance or whatever, then we can address the practicalities of whether we can actually reach that, that high goal, that high hurdle. That's what I would propose. And like, for instance, on five point one, we're working to minimize the adverse effects. Okay? Why not say we want to eliminate adverse effects? That's our goal. Okay? It's like saying we want to have zero risk, which is unattainable. But it could be a goal to say that that's what we want to try to achieve. And this doesn't really, uh, in my view, doesn't really set the bar high enough for, for a comprehensive plan that's going to be here for the next twenty years. Uh, and I would use less weasel words like, you know, minimize and say, you know, we would like to eliminate any adverse effects. That's what the goal would be. That's the high bar. Uh, and I could go on in numerous other examples like this. But you see, my point is, I agree it's a guide. And, um, you know, then words are important. Semantics here, I'm sure we've argued all the time about all the woods and shoulds and coulds, but again, given that it's a, a goal or a plan, then the, the more that we can set those goals high and say, that's what we'd like to achieve. Now, when it gets down to the real world, we've got a particular mining application, we've got a particular site, we got a, you know, that's where the nuances get involved in saying, but, but from my perspective, a, a mining operation may say, you know, well, gosh, it would cost a million dollars to minimize, you know, to really reduce these effects. And that's not, um, economically viable for me. And then they get a pass. And so when they get, when they get-
Hold on a second. So when you're saying eliminate, that's a big goal because eliminate is everything. And, and so we'd have to specify basically on every different category on elimination. Am I correct?
Yeah. If you, um, if, if the board chose to actually add eliminate in there, then I would ask that you actually identify what you would consider an adverse effect for every single point. So we could understand if we could even ever meet that from a mining perspective.
Madam Chair.
Senator LeCroy.
Mr. Bell?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I've, you've, I was on the planning commission and I know we took public comment from when, when you're, you made those public ones. I believe, as Ms. Hickock said, this is a, a guide. And I understand you wanting to set the goals high, but I also feel they need to be reasonable, attainable. At the end of our guide, we actually have a, uh, a, how to attain some of the goals that we're looking for. But I think we need to be reasonable. And I wouldn't, I would hesitate putting any type of language like that into, uh, a comprehensive guide because for the simple fact, because then we have people read it and they misinterpret it as that's how it's supposed to be. And I think our staff has worked hard and I think we've had, I don't know how many public meetings through all, all, all of this. I mean, several, several, several. And I'm quite content with how it's reading. But I, I'm, I'm, my biggest thing is, is they need to be reasonable and attainable. And that's how I look at it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
I kind of put it in perspective, the, the sheriff saying, I want to eliminate crime. We're not going to totally eliminate crime. It's just unrealistic, but we can try to minimize it. And that's the way I kind of looked at, at this roadmap here.
And again, it's subject to interpretation. Uh, I, I understand that. And I just like to, you know, suggest that we set the bar a little higher and, uh, maybe, maybe there are some other words in here. Uh, minimize is, uh, you know, acknowledging that we're going to have adverse effects. That's what it's acknowledging. And, uh, and I, and I think, uh, we ought to just set the bar higher. So I appreciate, uh, you listening to me. And so, uh, that was just one example, but I understand your position about being practical. Uh, and I think the practicality comes when we talk about a particular site, a particular ordinance, a particular instance. And, uh, I'm not aware that people use these guidelines as a hammer, other than saying that's something that we should try to strive for or achieve. So-
So, Mr. Bell, can you tell me on the waste plan, once a year where you saw that? Is there something that we only have it once a year?
We, we, we-
That's hazardous waste.
It got stricken. It says as needed or something by, it says that now, you know, and, uh, I don't know. I was looking at the one that was the changes and there was a section in there under the hazardous waste where it got.
And, and you know, again, um, it's a guide.
Yep.
And bottom line is those shalls will be in ordinances. And, um, we do it in the city. When I was in the city, same thing. You'll have a guide. And then what happens with the guide is then you start doing, like we just talked about, re-rezone. So it makes it a lot simplified. And then we put a planned unit or a, a PUD overlay over it. That's when you start doing the major changes on it. Makes sense?
I'm sorry if I could, Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. Just by way of example, the, um, pending, uh, ordinance amendment nineteen oh two dealing with aggregate, uh, mining, uh, actually is very much on topic. Not only are legal non-conforming existing operations subject to, uh, certain mining operation, uh, rules concerning operation, they're also subject to the provision dealing with reclamation under the new ordinance. So even existing operations would be subject to those requirements under the newly, uh, pending ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. And it does say all surface mines in the county, unless otherwise exempt, shall be subject to reclamation plans that meet Surface Mining Control and Reclamation Act of nineteen seventy seven requirements. So it does have that in there. Basically, there's many mining claims in, in, uh, Pennington County that have been there, like Danielle said, eighteen somethings, that, um, now we're going to have them reclaim them. Um, I don't know.
I, I acknowledge there have been improvements to, to this. As it's gone through all the revisions and I appreciate everybody's effort.
And, and we appreciate your, your coming up here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Um, Danielle Weavers?
Sorry, just one, um, note. Dustin Willett is coming to speak, um, regarding his question about the hazardous waste.
Okay.
So he will be here to speak to that.
Um, one of our persons after, uh, our emergency management man will come and talk. I'll have Danielle speak first since she's here.
Okay. Same person, Danielle Weavers, but this time I'm talking for Weavers Farm and Ranch out by Owanka, South Dakota. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank you guys too. As far as this process goes, I know it's kind of an ungrateful process as everyone comes forward with their comments and wants and asks. But I did participate, participate in three of the four meetings out at Wall. They were very well conducted. Um, they heard us out. We saw the notes that came back from them. We feel like for the most part, everything was heard. Even when we came back with some corrections on the notes, I know that they took note of that piece of it too. So while usually I'm up here with an ask for a different agenda, um, I just wanted to take a moment too, to thank you guys for what you put together on this process.
And that'd be our staff, um, our planning staff and Michelle, uh, we really appreciate what you're saying. And they, they've done, we, my, our main issue for a commission was to make sure the public had their say, um, and listen to what they're saying. And some of the changes are made and some of the changes aren't, but I think they did good, do a good job.
Well, as a landowner, I appreciate it and I'm kind of disappointed that I'm one of the few ones here today. So I, I still appreciate you.
Thank you.
One of our planning commissioners, she is a environmental scientist. So I think she was looking out for the best interest of the county when they did this.
Brittany. Okay. Emergency management? What's your name, sir?
Please, I wonder. Hi, Dustin Willett. I'm the, uh, director of emergency management for Pennington County. Uh, happy to stand for any questions you might have.
What was the question?
So, um, the question was, is in the comprehensive plan, it mentions that the hazardous waste day that was apparently written prior as mandatory once a year, now it's, um, as needed. Is that correct, Mr. Bell? Okay.
Is that what you were saying, sir?
That sounds correct.
And he's concerned that it's not mandatory once a year, that it's as needed, because then that could mean, well, that leaves it up to interpretation and maybe we're not going to get our hazardous waste day often enough.
Correct. Uh, so the rationale behind that, I can, I can certainly put out what the rationale was and, and, and do with that as, as you feel or as you deem, uh, necessary. So it is a matter of making sure we know what the need is in the community and meeting that need. It wasn't, the language wasn't changed to get out from anything. Uh, but just as a, a, where we stand right now today and costs change, uh, from year to year. But where we're at right now, it's upwards of seventy thousand, seventy plus thousand dollars, uh, to do that event. Um, so to, to say that we're absolutely going to spend seventy thousand dollars every single year, um, uh, might not be the same approach as this is an expensive, logistically challenging event that we contract out that we bring in. Uh, is there enough household hazardous waste generated to justify that every year? Or right now, we've been doing it every, I'm going to say, it's not clockwork, but I'm going to say on average, we've been doing one about every three years. Uh, so the question is, is if we do it every year, what, what volume of household hazardous waste that need to be disposed are we generating? We don't have that data. Uh, and so it, I think that language was written not to lock us into, we're absolutely going to do this every year because we might not need it every single year. And it's a pretty significant expenditure and logistic, logistical operation. So-
Thank you, Dustin. Um, Mr. Bell, did you have a follow-up to ask? You can come up here and ask him if you'd like, sir. This is what this is for today. Thank you.
I would just ask, who pays that seventy thousand?
Uh, so the lion's share of it right now is through, uh, Rapid City Solid Waste Division. Uh, and then the Pennington County Local, uh, Emergency Planning Committee, LEPC, uh, helps out as much as we can, but we don't have a whole lot of funds. So, uh, I would say, uh, out of that seventy thousand dollars, sixty-five thousand dollars of it is from the city.
So, yeah, that's what I've heard is, you know, a, a reason why we wouldn't do it more frequently is because of cost, but really the cost is borne by the city. And I think more data should be collected. Like you say, how much hazardous waste is really generated? How much is going in ditches and down the sewer and the drain when we don't have these things frequently enough? So I think, you know, perhaps some more work should be done and not just say the cost is why we don't do it more frequently because that's what I've heard.
Madam Chair.
Hold on just a second. Follow-up?
So, so, uh, I can say that at our last LEPC meeting, um, uh, our, our Rapid City Solid Waste, uh, uh, representative, uh, came forward and said at this time, they're planning on, on making that an annual event for the foreseeable future. Uh, so we will get some information back on, but if we, a- a- again, the thing is, is if we, we, if we spend seventy thousand dollars in taxpayers' money and, and we get two cans of paint, it, it, it's, it's not a, the, the cost benefit there doesn't, doesn't play out. So it's a matter of, of getting the data and making sure that we are putting on the event frequently enough to keep hazardous materials out of the environment and dispose of them properly, uh, but not tie our hands into, to hosting an event, um, when we don't have the volume to justify it.
Commissioner LeCroy?
I, I, I have another look on this. Um, as, as Justin just said, you know, the numbers may not always be there because the, I think the original reason why this was all started was for awareness. And then bringing it down and people, once they learned what they could do and how to dispose of them, it's easy to do it themselves as donations, one paint. You could take it to restore and they turn around and resell them to other places. I mean, there's a lot of different options, but I think, I think the public's learned quite a bit. And I followed some of them. So I, I don't think it's all dumping it down the drain and doing that, that type. It's like paint, you mix it with the sand and you can let it dry out.
Mr. Bell, do you have a follow-up?
Um, again, we don't have the data. I guess I would like to see more effort made. And, uh, it gets back to the shoulds and the wow, and the, and the shalls in the, in the, uh, in the, in the goal. And so, you know, we'd like to have them frequently enough that we're meeting the needs of the community. I agree with that. Um, but how's that need going to be determined? That's the real question.
And, Mr. Bell, you can get with our emergency management, Dustin Willett, anytime if you have some of those questions and maybe he can work with you to figure out some of that data. And maybe that's going to help with LEPC or even city changing their minds on, on annual instead of three year.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure, if I could. Uh, and I have just apologized. Paint was a really poor example because paint is something that we can dispose of locally in our landfill when it's treated properly. A poor example. What this event is designed for are for those substances that we cannot dispose of locally, that we have to bring in trucks from a, an out-of-state contractor. They collect it, they take it back and dispose of it per regulation. So, uh, these are, these are for, for household chemicals that we don't have, uh, the local, uh, capability to, to dispose of property. So I, I apologize for using paint as a example as a point here.
And, uh, I will get with Dustin here and we'll, we'll try to work out the details of how do we get more awareness. And, uh, then if you get the feedback from the, from the, uh, citizens that there is a need, then that's going to push this. And I think that's maybe how we do it.
Well, we appreciate your concerns today, Mr. Bell, as well. So, um, Gary does have-
Dustin, just a quick question. I presume then we don't collect it either until-
So that's the, that's the rub. That's the crux of this whole thing is, um, all generalizations are false, including this one. But the typical problem that we run into is an estate. Uh, uh, family members come in to clean out a garage or clean out a property that's been left vacant and they open the doors of the shed that's been in the backyard for fifty years and there's these corroded drums and jars and nobody knows what anything is. And, and, and so that, it, again, stereotypically, that's, that's what we see are these people come in and now they have all these chemicals that they didn't even know were there and they want to get rid of them appropriately. And so they contact, uh, the authorities to try to get rid of those chemicals appropriately. The question becomes, uh, when we only hold these events every three years, what are the chances of those people that were arrived to clean out the shed, sitting on those chemicals for three years until we hold an event? Um, so, uh, the, the question becomes how much of that's out there? And, and the, the rub is people typically don't hold on to those chemicals for years to wait for the next event. Um, so the reality is, is if we don't have those event, if it's not convenient, uh, sometimes those chemicals, uh, get disposed of improperly. Um, so there's a lot of, of balancing to do there in terms of, of, of risk and benefit and cost. But, but as, as we move forward, at least in the near future, uh, the intent is to, to have those every year. So-
What would they do? I mean, do you have a spot if, if that was Mr. Bell's ancestors or something that moved out or a family member? I mean, what does he do then? I mean, he, he's not going to hold on to it three years. What do you tell him then? You're holding on to it for three years?
So our, our, all we can- So, our, our, all we can say is, is these are the events we hold, this is typically when we hold them, and the appropriate way to dispose of this for no cost is to wait and bring them to the event. We absolutely will provide the contractor numbers, but to have an out-of-state contractor come and pick up chemicals from an individual household would be, in most cases, cost prohibitive. So, we provide the, the, the contractors' names that are out there that do that, but I would be surprised if individuals would bear that cost.
So, you don't have the data of how many times that happens, because that would be crazy if it happens even five times a year, depending on if they're barrels or whatever, because you already know where those chemicals are going to go, you're going to dump them on that land.
Yep.
So, there isn't a different outline besides a three-year? I mean, we don't, we can't have somebody...
At this point, we're, we're going to hold them every year, I mean, that's the intent, is to, is to hold them every year, but no, there's no, there's no chemical warehouse where we just say, hey, come bring your bad nasty stuff, and...
But, do you have like five calls a year? Do you have ten calls a year? Or is it one?
I would say, and, I'm sorry, this is totally anecdotal, this is just off the top of my head, I would say we probably have two or three of those calls a year.
So, are there private sectors, is there somebody in the private sector that would collect various things like that? Probably at a charge, or not?
Locally?
Right.
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, I understand then.
Madam Chair, depends on what type of chemical you're getting rid of. If it's oil, if it's automobile oil, O'Reilly's, you can bring your automobile, your used automobile oil into O'Reilly's and dump it there, and you have to keep your plastic containers, you can't drop those off there also, but, so there are facilities that will take your used oil, but as far as gasoline that's rotten, or those types of things...
Remember forty years ago, or whatever, thirty, twenty, whatever years ago, those pesticides that you can't use anymore?
Yeah, we see a lot of agricultural-centric chemicals, pesticides, herbicides, insecticides, and then the, the complete unknowns, the, it's a corroded, rusted-out container, and nobody knows what's in it.
Right.
Those, those types of orphan sources, we, we, we treat with kid gloves. But I, I, to speak to Commissioner DeSanto's point, I, I do believe that both the Rapid City Solid Waste and the Pennington County LEPC have a, a very good, easy-to-navigate, easy-to-use, comprehensive list of, of what we can get rid of locally. So, that's a great example, oil, paint, those things that we can dispose of, that, that there are people that will take locally, that, that list exists, and I think it's good. This is, this is primarily for those things that, that we just can't get rid of locally, legally.
So, Mr. Bell, you stirred quite the conversation.
Yes, thank you.
And we'll get, have you get with...
I'll work with Dustin, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Madam Chair, before we go on to anything, I just wanted to take a point, privilege to, to thank the citizens that participated in this comprehensive plan, I mean, it's, the two that showed up here to the air floor that showed up here shows your, your compassion and your persistence to wanting to see a better community, and I very much appreciate that, and, and your time for coming here.
Yep, I did hope. Brittany, what's next?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
So, what would be next is to approve this with the changes, and then send it back to Planning Commission with your guys' changes, and then we'll have to advertise the meeting in front of the Planning Commission, and then it will come back to you guys for a final.
Okay, motion?
Move for approve.
What Brittany said? Did you get that, Kara? Motion by Lacroy, second by DeSanto, with the changes, going back to the Planning Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
DeSanto, second by Roskinet, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to wish everyone a very happy and merry Christmas, and be safe, and enjoy yourselves and your families and your loved ones.